Can I move?
Please stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 7th of 2023 meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We're going to start out with the consent agenda.
I'm Mr. John Carroll, February 7th, 2023, Bureau of Planes, June 26th, and February 2nd, 2023, per move minutes for January 10th and January 23rd, 2023, weights and measures monthly report, December 16th, 2022, through January 15th, 2023.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved. Memorial Opera House, is Scott here?
There he is.
In our artistic services agreement with Lucky Stiff, Michael Glorioso.
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 Good old Sicilian name. Good morning.
Say it, but don't spell it.
Right, exactly. And Michael has signed on to be our set designer for the show, so this is just his contract for that.
Okay, motion to approve the contract?
I move to approve the contract.
Second. Laura seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements, we get a citizen's appointment to the Plan Commission, one appointment, it has a Democrat affiliation residing in unincorporated Porter County.
Motion, I nominate Pam Fish.
May I second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have a second appointment, citizen's appointment to the Stormwater Advisory Board, one appointment residing in unincorporated Porter County. I believe that it doesn't have to be affiliated to a party, political party. You have a motion or a what?
I nominate Andy Vasquez.
And I nominate Bob Durant. Final order?
I'll second that appointment, a motion to, for Andy Vasquez. Primarily because Andy is a local business owner down around the Cots area and a farmer. And I just think that his, his appointment would be valuable, just sitting on the Stormwater Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Debbie Gunn, could you step up here? Debbie is the Director of E-911. Let's tell us a little bit about why you're here.
Thank you for this opportunity to recognize the 911 Center. So often, I imagine, we're familiar with 911 debacles when we see those in the media and on the news. This is an opportunity to show what exactly the 911 Department has done and is capable of doing. On January 26th at 9:13, we received first notification that there was a bomb threat and a possible active assailant at Portage High School. Following that, over the course of, I won't go into great detail, but over the course of the next two hours, we were also notified of a similar threat from Valparaiso High School and Wheeler High School. So those of you that are familiar with jurisdictions, public safety jurisdictions in Porter County, that's our three police frequencies, Portage Sheriff's Department and Valparaiso Police Department. We had six dispatchers working in the room that day, of whom all are sitting here with us today, fortunately. And during that time, I'd like to just give a little window into that hour and a half, two-hour period for the dispatchers. They dispatched 45 officers to those incidents, that's not including Detective Bureau. They dispatched 10 total fire departments. Those are just the number of fire departments, not the number of apparatus, countless, as you can imagine. And in a, just under a two-hour timeframe, answered 113 calls. So that is remarkable. In addition to communicating with responders, they're still receiving phone calls of people that aren't related to the incident. Many of them can tell you stories of that day, of just other regular calls that came in, and they were able to deal with those people during their crisis, the responders responding to these separate crises together, and maintain composure. And in addition to all of that, the communication side of this, one thing that a lot of people aren't, don't realize about the 911 Center is, I've mentioned it multiple times, the technical aspect. So in addition to the communicating with callers, communicating with responders, they're dealing with software and the technical side of things. It is nothing short of remarkable. It's nothing short of remarkable. And I am honored that you have recognized our center and you, and you recognize the effort put forth by the dispatchers that are here. Thank you. We're all just very grateful.
Well, you know, there's, I mean, they, just like anybody else, whether you work in the mill or whatever you do, I mean, they come in and do a job every day as expected. But those kind of events and moments are, don't happen very often. And it's, it is a wonder when you consider that you're handling a total of more than 100 calls in a very rapid, very rapid fire and not drop the ball somewhere. And, you know, especially when we, we consider how many different responding agencies were involved in that. And with all, you know, the outcome was great, you know, kudos to the city of Valparaiso. And well, kudos to all of the public safety agencies, but everybody did their job. And I mean, that's what you hope for you when something like that happens, that nobody, nobody trips and nobody tripped. So it's great and very, very proud of you, all of you dispatchers. So with that, the Board of Commissioners would like to identify each one of them with a certificate appreciation from Porter County Government. And I'm going to hand this to you and you could call them up as a, as you would like.
And let's just take this opportunity to spotlight Sandra Gallegos. She actually was the call taker for both times the suspect called in. Ironically, she, she took both of those calls and handled them phenomenally well. I suppose, yes, that's the job we do, but there's not many people who could handle the call in the manner that she did. So very good job, all of you. Sandra?
And Debbie Gunn?
And Debbie Gunn. I just, I just want you to know that there, only professionals could pull that off. And thank you for being the professionals that you are. Thank you very much. I'm going to let them, I'm going to let them get out of here first.
Okay. You can still sit.
Sitting in front of us is Denise Conlin. And your name, sir?
Rick Kalinsky.
Okay. And Denise and Rick are both from NIPSCO. And we've asked them to come, if they would come to us in front of us today and explain a little bit about what they're doing and maybe explain a little bit about why rates are, have gone up. Also explain, explain a little bit about, you know, power outages and what, you know, what your team has been doing to try to make those less and less each passing year. And I may have a, I may have a question about solar farms as well.
Okay.
Like to hear your opinion on it.
Sure. All right, absolutely. Well, on behalf of NIPSCO, Rick and I are happy to be here. Thank you Commissioner Regnet for reaching out and asking us to come out and, and hang out for a little bit. In regards to bills that are currently going on, rates, et cetera, we have had definitely a bit of an increase in gas costs over this winter due to our commodity costs, quite frankly, just like we're seeing at the pumps. Gas that flows from us to our customers does just that. It direct flows. We don't do any upcharges or anything of that nature, but the cost of the gas is a lot higher this year over past years, again, just like kind of at the pumps. But we also want to make sure that our residents, our community is well aware of the energy assistance programs we have available. The first one is the LIHEP funding that is our federally funded program. And for the state of Indiana, 45 mil, wait a minute, $94 million has been awarded. And we encourage our customers, if they are in need, to either contact us, which is 1-800-464-NIPSGO, dial 211, where they have operators available to assist them and actually the application process. And they can do this, it started back in early November through May 1st. Once they apply, and if they are approved, they also may be eligible for what we call the NIPSCO Care Discount. And that could be up to a 26% discount on your monthly bill. In addition, we have hardship programs. We have the Township Trustee Program. We have two new piloted programs that NIPSCO only in the state of Indiana offer, and it's SERVE and Silver. SERVE is geared towards our veterans and it's a $400 one-time benefit. And they have to have service in their name, have served, could be active, and have to have, their bill needs to be passed due. And by passed due, that doesn't mean a disconnect notice, it means just passed due. For our Silver, which is our senior citizens, 60 years and over, bill in their name, could be eligible for a one-time, again, $400 benefit, no, no disconnect notice, just passed due. Those are some things we have going on. We really encourage folks to reach out to us, call our 800 number, dial 211, nipsco.com, Energy Assistance, we, and we can help out. There, like I said, a myriad of opportunities. This year's benefit-
Does that help have to be repaid? If help is, does not have to be-
This is, this does not, this is given to them as a benefit and never repaid. And also, some of these programs are not even, the poverty levels have risen to help, maybe in between. A senior citizen, that's questionable, you know, unfixed incomes helping out a little bit. And, and also for the Silver SERVE, somebody could qualify for both programs and receive an $800 benefit. Our average benefit right now, I was on the, did a radio show earlier this morning, last year, our average LIHEP benefit from the government was about $450. Right now, it's about 517. So it's increased this year alone. So we really encourage customers to try to take advantage and get, get ahold of us. There's a lot of times there's money left on the table and we don't want to have that happen, you know, take advantages as much as possible. So I have information to leave, should you want it, my card as well, should you-
Denise, can I, can I say a couple things?
You sure can.
And I think Commissioners, the key is, is, you know, if someone's having challenges with their bills, winter is a time where you're using a lot more gas, we're heating our homes, we're cooking, your bills seem to go up a little bit. The first thing we want to do is make sure somebody reaches out to our 1-800 number, goes online and doesn't wait to, to need support or help, because we have a lot of programs, as Denise stated. And I want to talk a little bit more about the commodity, right? Denise did a nice job of explaining the fact that natural gas is very similar to gas, like a commodity we see at the pumps, right? You see the price go up and down. For the last 10 years, we're lucky enough as a company that we have strategically positioned ourselves to really be the lowest-cost natural gas provider in the state. Now, gas as a commodity has went up, and what that is, is a pass-through cost. So NIPSCO makes no extra dollars on that. We get, per therm that you use, we get a, a pass-through cost per therm. Now, let's just say, this isn't, just for, for the knowledge of everybody here, if a therm is $100, which it's not, I just want to make it simple, and that cost goes up to $120, we don't make, we don't make any more money than that, on that particular therm that we pass through. That cost goes right to the, to the actual consumer. The good news is, is we're seeing already the last two months, that natural gas is starting to come down. We're seeing that already. And the challenge is, is everything pricing is in arrears by a quarter, by about a three month period. But over the last two months, we've seen those prices stabilize. So I think customers have some good news in the future here, where gas prices will go down a little bit as well. Very important, I think, to point that out. But the key is, is if somebody needs some support, reach out to us. We, you know, we're in the business of providing safe, reliable energy to our customers. We don't want to, you know, ever, you know, cut that service off to our customers. We've got ways that we can work with them and we'll do that.
And in addition, for the first time ever, we have a, what they call credit agreements, our payment plans, we have opened up our payment plans to all customers at the 12-month level. We've never done that in the years I've been with NIPSCO, realizing that there are those challenges. And another great program we offer is a budget plan, where you pay the same amount every year and every year it balances up and the amount changes based on your usage. So budget plan, kind of knowing what you're going to owe every month, but not always, you know, possible for those in need. So like Rick said, reach out to us. So you had some questions about solar, right?
Well, before that-
Okay.
I wanted to have you speak a little bit about, you know, there's, we see a lot of, seems like we see a lot of power outages, you know, during a storm. I mean, they're, they're not just happening arbitrarily, there's, it's typically on the heels of a storm. What are you all doing to try to make those as least as possible?
Really good question. So obviously reliability is, is key to providing customers the service they deserve. Storms typically can challenge our, our infrastructure, there's no question. To answer your question, two, two things I'd probably point out is, over the last six, six years, we've spent over $2 billion upgrading our infrastructure. That's, you know, transmission lines, substations, new substations. If you think of, a couple of years ago, we put in a new substation right downtown off of 30 as you're coming into, I think a lot of people probably saw as that was taking place. So just bringing in, you know, our infrastructure is no different than roads and bridges, right? You, you put it in, in 1950s or 60s, there's a time where it has its useful life and we need to make sure that we get in there and we upgrade our infrastructure. So we're seeing a lot of upgrades, poles, wires, circuits, that I think are helping with dependability. But we're also, over the last five years, we've spent millions and millions of dollars, more than we had in previous years, on tree maintenance, as far as our forestry. We're really using a lot of contractors, we're using drones, we're using different ways of making sure that we're identifying challenging areas. Over 50% of our outages, especially with storms, are tree-related issues. And it's a balance, right? Because you, you want to appropriately cut down trees because they're very important to the environment. Sometimes you, you want to cut down trees in front of someone's house and they don't want you to do that. And that's understandable. So we try to do our best to, to work with them, but that has really, I think, helped us. And if there are challenging areas that, that you guys are aware of, that your constituents come to you and let you know that you've seen some issues, let us know, let Denise know. We'll audit that circuit, we'll find out what we can do. Please let us know.
And in addition, for those that are environmentally stewards, fans of that, we also are, our tree department are, they also talk, come out and do talks about types of trees to plant under wires and things of that major. So, and I've attended a couple of them and they're very, very, very interesting.
To the, the solar question is, county government has been approached by a company about putting in a solar farm in the Malden area.
Nextera.
I believe it's 2,200 acres or so.
Yeah, 250 megawatts, maybe?
Yeah.
Something like that.
And I was wondering, and I, and my understanding is, and you could, you could tell, you could explain quickly what the relationship is that NIPSCO or REMC would have with the solar company as far as buying that energy back?
Yeah. And I, I do not believe that we have any relationship with that particular development that is being proposed. We do have some of our own solar farms that we are building out in kind of our southern territory. You know, we obviously support renewable energy. We are going toward, we are moving our generation portfolio from a coal generation portfolio to a more renewable portfolio. And really, the, the positive there is, two, two things I look at it and I'll think about it, I'll tell you my perspective from a utility and then also potentially as, as you guys is leading the, the county. The renewable energy transition, I think, is a good one. There's no question, we've made that, that decision to do that. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of talk about the environment and becoming, you know, carbon, carbon neutral and so forth. That is a great goal of that. However, we feel that by investing in renewable assets, that it will stabilize prices for our customers in the future. And the reason being is, when you have your bill, and we produce most of our electricity currently by coal, coal's a commodity as well, there's a price. You have a, a price into your, your bill, there's a fuel cost every month that you have that you pay for coal. It's again, a pass-through cost, we don't make any money on it. We also have an old, you know, we have old coal-fired facilities that are 50 years old, right? Lot of maintenance, lot of people there to take care of them. Sun, wind, there's no cost, there's no fuel, it's free still, right? Hopefully forever. I think we all know that. But, and the bottom line is, once we get a good amount of renewables online, you're going to see prices that will stabilize because it'll take less manpower to run something like that, there's no fuel cost. So it's positive for us from, from an ability to provide our customer service. Now, I'll tell you an interesting story that I think you might like, is our coal-fired plant, the Schaefer Plant in, in Jasper, in Wheatfield, is roughly about 40% of their assessed value within the county. Big challenge, right? We're going to close that down, that's a big gap for them. But what we did is, we worked with them to put in a solar farm, one of the larger solar farms that will be in the country. And the assessed value essentially balanced out because of that. Yes, it's a lot of acreage that it's taking up, right? There are some, some pros and cons, I think there are people who are for it, there are people who are against it. But it could be a very good opportunity for assessed value and tax revenue for a local government or a county government. I think that's, that's one positive that you have to look at. But again, I realize that there's pros and cons to that. And those are just some general thoughts and any questions you have, I'd be happy to, to answer them.
So you, you, you currently do not have any relationship with Nextera?
We, we do have, not on the particular project that I, that they're proposing in Porter County. We do not have a, a purchase power agreement, meaning if they own and operated, there are some, some, as a matter of fact, with Nextera, but not at that particular site. We do have what's called a purchase power agreement, where they build it, they maintain it, they're going to produce power. We've committed for a period of time to purchase power from them to provide service to our customers. But this particular project, we, we do not have any agreement. And they, they have the ability to do that, as there are many independent generators of, of power that actually go back and they sell into the market, essentially the grid, right? Through, through MISO or other independent system managers. And so that's what they do in a situation like that.
When those, when those, those farms are available, but there are locally, do your ratepayers, in this case, the ratepayers here in Porter County, will we see some kind of decrease in our rate by, by, you know, going into an agreement with them to purchase their, their energy?
We, we do not have a purchase power agreement that would, our rates would have to be similar across the board. We could never offer a particular county or subgroup a different rate than another. So-
The answer is no.
All of our rates have to get approved through the IURC.
Do you have any questions for us or the Board, any of the Commissioners there?
I did have a question because you've already had some public meetings about that proposed 18% increase to cover the cost of alternative energy in other counties, not, not Porter County. And I'm just wondering if you can comment on that. We just did a little estimate of what it would, how that would impact county government. And it would be close to $213,000 based on last year's energy bills. So if you could just address that, how you're asking counties to cover the cost of these sorts of enterprises in other counties?
Yeah, and I, just as anything, you know, and I hate to, to point to this, but I think we all know that at, we're seeing inflation and a lot of things, the prices go up, right? And I think the idea is, behind the, the rate case or the rate request is to help with the investment. Like the, the investment upfront of solar and wind that we're going through right now is, is taking a lot of capital. And the idea is, you know, our rates don't typically go down, right? And I understand that. But I think, once we get our capital in, in play and we're starting to see generation from our renewable assets, rates will stabilize. And then two things I want to point out. One, one is, when we use wind and solar, we create what's called a renewable energy credit. Those can be monetized. For instance, we have not brought on solar yet online, but we have brought on some wind. And we're going to actually refund customers, and you'll see it in your bill, and there'll be an announcement probably in about a month or two about the amount of money, but we're going to refund customers tens of millions of dollars because of the renewable energy credits that we will create by using these programs. So yes, it is a capital outlay upfront, but I think the idea is, the investment then will pay for itself over years and it will stabilize our rates.
And not to mention that, that increases in steps. It's not an all-at-once increase, it's three different step process.
So as we, so as we, we move through this change, from what I'm hearing, this may not be the last increase. Because you, you've got capital assets that have to be purchased because there's this change order. I, I totally understand that. But, I mean, but the, the flip side of that is, it's going to be years, I think you just is, is mentioned that Denise, is that before the ratepayers actually benefit from that.
No, I meant the increase was a step over three years, a step process.
Yeah, and not to, to your point, Commissioner, it, it will be a gradual, you know, ability for the, for ratepayers to see the benefit of that as well. Yes, because it will take time as we bring in, we, we can't bring in all the renewable assets on, say, by 2024. Our plan is to move forward through probably 2028, 2029 and have all of our assets that are in play.
And currently, just real quickly, if you may, you may or may not know, for most of the, the energy or electricity that you're providing, this county anyway, is that coming from the Westville Plant?
It, it's really hard to ever determine exactly where it comes from because it truly is governed by an independent operator that, you know, allows us, there are times where we will even idle some of our coal plants because we can truly go to the grid, MISO, who, who we are a member of, and purchase off the grid at a lower rate to feed our customers. So it's really, it's, it's hard to say. For instance, we had some wind agreements for wind, wind assets that were, you know, in the middle of the country and the states, I'm not sure if it's Montana or Idaho or something like that. But we had agreements with them, so there's really no way to really determine exactly where the electricity is coming from, right? It is a pool of-
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask is that, you know, if there is this transition that is inevitable, is that, you know, we, I think one of the benefits of this particular county is that it has, it still holds on to a rural flavor to it. And, you know, eating up thousands of acres for either wind or solar, you know, when we, you know, we deal with the, we deal with the mills to the north, you see other industries, you know, that pop up here and there, is losing that, that attractive part of us, that identity. And that's what I hope that, you know, we're able to hold on to. And that's why, you know, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of solar for, for that reason. I mean, it eats up a lot of, of land, whereas the, the plant you have to the south of us, I can guarantee ain't sitting on 2,000 acres.
Right.
So, anyway.
It's a balance and I understand that. There are some counties that are not in favor of it. You know, as a utility, I think, we think that's the best way in the future to provide customers, you know, good, dependable, safe energy. But I understand, I understand.
Well, thank you very much. And you've, you've done, done a great job answering our question. Well, thank you very much. And you've, you've done, done a great job answering our questions, and I appreciate it. Taking time out of your busy schedules.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. CCMG funding program?
Jim, come up and
Daniel?
That's not Daniel, it's Jim.
Oh, Jim. I'm sorry, Jim.
Good morning.
Good morning. I believe this is going to be the transfer from, or the loan from Bridge into CCMG to cover the remaining balance of the 2022 CCMG roads.
The community crossing grant is, is, is a grant that we apply for each year. We have been awarded, I believe, was a million dollars?
Uh, yeah, we get a million dollar match from the state, correct?
So we have to match that. And, you know, currently, we don't have a million dollars laying there just to grab and, and throw it at that match. So the Commissioners are, are going to approach the county council to borrow from the Bridge Fund, which, Scott, you can jump in here at any time, which
Be a temporary loan to go ahead and appropriate the required balance into the CCMG fund so we can close out the 2022 CCMG project. And then we've applied for the 2023 CCMG grant. If we receive that, then we'll be looking for the, whatever the match would be. If we got the full match, it'd be another million dollars. So we can deal with that with the council in the summer and budget time.
Now, usually it's about April when we hear back from the state as far as awarding of the grant.
So is there any need for any kind of motion here, Scott?
I don't believe so. I believe we've already caused the appropriate paperwork or things to be turned into the council office to be appropriately advertised for their meeting to take action.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'll be back up in a little bit.
Yes. An ordinance creating a non-reverting fund, 8165, for receipt of Alperisa Lakes Area Conservancy District Blackhawk Beach Grant, the first reading.
So Blackhawk Beach or the Alperisa Lakes Area Conservancy District, and I believe that's why Mr. Hollenbach is present today. We're able to, this was the Ocre Grant, is that correct, Counselor?
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you on behalf of the Conservancy District. This is a good example of collaboration and coordination. And the Commissioners stepped forward to be the sponsoring agency along with the Conservancy District to implement an application, and you were successful in getting an award. And that money will be spent in the Blackhawk Beach area, north, north side of Flint Lake. I euphemistically call these things tank trails. I don't even call them roads. But it's going to get a lot of water off of the, the roads and downward belongs in Flint Lake. And improving stormwater management is a critically important quality of life matter. So this is part of the process where the Auditor's Office helps us in terms of being the conduit through which the grant money passes. And to do that, we have to have a dedicated fund for State Board of Account purposes where this grant money goes in and comes out. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. Karen, we thank you and your department for accommodating this as well. I know that having one more additional thing to do isn't, they don't like to see me coming because I usually have an additional thing to do, but thank you.
Part of the job, Dave.
So I have to open this up
Yes.
for any comments from the, the public. And I, I guess we'll start with, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my first, my first attempt at this one, so. Those who are not in favor of the, us receiving or signing off on this, on this grant, you may come forward and speak. Anybody not in favor of this grant? Second request, anybody not in favor, like, if you would like to speak now? One more, anybody not in favor? All right, thank you. We'll close that. Anybody in favor would like to come up and speak about the merits of the grant? Other than what Dave just spoke of. Second call. Oh, what, here comes Walt.
Hi, thank you. Very briefly, I don't live in this. My name is Walt Breitinger.
Thank you.
I live on the Corner Park and Academy downtown Fallbowl. I don't live in that exact community, but I visit it quite often. Several times a month oftentimes. And those folks really need the help of having their stormwater managed better. And it's not just for that community and those people, but it's for all of our lakes. That, there's a lot of stormwater that erodes a, a lot of the beaches and the banks and the areas around there. And, and that mud or silt goes right into, sediment be a better term, right into Flint Lake. So that I see multiple reasons why this should be supported. Thank you.
Second request, anybody like to speak in favor? Third request, anybody like to speak in favor? Of accession closed. And that would, that pretty much concludes the first reading?
It does. We've seen action by the Commissioners.
Motion to approve on first read.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
We'll see the second reading. Resolution promoting American patriotism in Porter County. Give a copy of that resolution. We've been asked by a local, a local resident, also business owner, if we would, we would support a resolution identifying or acknowledging patriotism here in our, in our county. They also donated two large flags to, to hang in our, our buildings of, of our choice, which we will, we will also do. And the, the resolution is very simple. It's, whereas the Porter County Board of Commissioner values American patriotism, and whereas the American flag is a symbol of our freedom, our constitution, and the recognized goodness of our country. And now therefore be it resolved that the Porter County Board of Commissioners encourages our citizens, our community, institutions, and our businesses to explore ways that promote the, the treasured values of patriotism and respect for the American flag. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution promoting American patriotism in Porter County.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. There you go. Sign this real quick. ANZ Engineering LLC Consultant Agreement for Needs Assessment for the Porter County Highway Garage. We have, I bet, I guess, you know, over the last year or so, there's been light discussion about the condition of our highway garage, center district highway garage on Route 2. That was built in, I believe, 1960. Designed actually in 58, 59, and actually built in 1960. And little has been done with that, that property since that time. It is, from what I can see, far and away the worst property that we have, in need of some attention, some major attention. And so I, I reached out to ANZ Engineering Consulting Group out of Fort Wayne. And they brought in, they brought in some help. And they toured the, the property with Jim Poleric, the Highway Superintendent. And some good news came out of that in the sense that it was, it was always my fear that we would have to move that property. Because it only sets on, I believe, seven acres. And, you know, and finding, you know, ideally, I, I think that Jim Poleric had stated to me that 12 to 14 would be, would be the best scenario to be setting on for a highway, that, a highway garage that size. But they came in and looked at it, and they thought that they could fit whatever we needed on that, on that footprint, which is huge. Because I, I have no idea what property may or may be available in that general area because it has to be someplace here in the center district, and what, what the price tag would be for that. So that's good news. So, you know, what we're doing today is, we have, do we, we have a copy of their proposal? Scott, have you seen this?
I have.
Any comments?
Um, no, but it has the appropriate scope of work. I believe the compensation is 37, 950. Has a timeline of a pretty tight timeline. Looks like we will be getting final study submission by May 9th of 2023. Anticipated design phase would begin in June. So it meets all the legal requirements.
And another, you know, another valued point to, to this garage is, is that we retire the bond that we originally took out to build the jail that we're currently occupying. And that, that bond, I believe, is retired in January of next year, Karen? Is that correct? And we have to be locked and loaded with a new project or projects, or we lose that tax rate. So it's important that, and that was another reason that I was, I was hoping that we wouldn't need another piece of property to, to purchase because that, that could have taken months to do. So, but we're wanting to move pretty quickly on this and, and have everything in order. So when we can, we can just plug, plug in these new, new projects into that, that bond rate or that rate, tax rate. And we're looking at that, that project, and we're also looking at the county jail, which has major interior renovations needing to be done with that. And, and including, hopefully, if the money's there to do it, is to identify our deficiencies in holding, you know, at least, you know, a couple of, you know, a half a dozen beds for inmates that have severe mental, mental health issues in a way that we can keep our staff there safe and keep them as safe as possible, as long as they're under our, our liability. So, and we'll have more, we'll have more in both of those projects as, as this begins to play out over, over the next few months. But I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal.
I, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have anybody here from?
We have their business development person, Russell Baron is here.
We just usually have him come up.
So next time, you, you need to come up here, right? Say aye. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. All righty. Thank you. Commissioners' letter of support for the Grand Gardner Hotel. Barb?
Rickershaw has approached us about supporting their project in renovating the recently departed Boys and Girls Club facility, which is the 1899 Gardener School building. And they are going to be building a boutique hotel. And they have asked if we will support their request for favorable consideration for redevelopment tax credits.
And Scott, have you looked over that letter?
I have.
Okay. You're good with it?
I am.
Okay. Any questions, Laura?
Nope.
Barb, anything?
I move that we approve our support for the, for the Grand Gardner project.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Auditor Karen Martin, the Visiting Nurse Association ARPA Agreement.
I submitted the agreement to the Commissioners with reverence to the amount that the Porter County Council approved $450,000 in appropriations for the VNA hospice, Northwest Indiana. As of this submission, we are only outstanding six other townships and one other nonprofit.
So what, what do we need to do here? We need to approve the agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you, Karen. Expo, Laura Daley. The Fair Project Update with Dave Bagnow and Laura Daley. See, if you guys knew somebody up here, you'd be, you'd be earlier on this agenda, but
I thought Darren was coming up.
You had to sit here all this time.
We don't mind.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. What can we do for you?
Do you want David to go first, or you want me to go first?
Please, first.
Okay. So what we have here is a standard fee waiver schedule that I worked with Barb on. Several county departments request space at the expo and the grounds to do training, a variety of different events. So this is kind of a blanket approval, so I don't have to keep bugging you.
Dave?
So the reason I'm here is just to give you a little update of what's happening out at the fairgrounds with the Porter County Ag Society. And as, as most people know, we're just a tenant there. But part of our agreement is that we maintain the buildings and, and infuse money into projects out there to keep it as, as beautiful as we can. And so this year, we have several projects that are going on with some ARPA funds. We're going to replace the entire fence along 49 and Division, which we've started working on. They're going to deliver the fence on Friday. And we hit, plan on hitting the road, or ground running on next week, getting the fence installed. It's going to be very attractive. It's a black vinyl, so it'll be, emanate the 2023 look of
Yeah, that fence that's up there now is anything but attractive.
It, it has been there for 35 years.
Yeah.
It served its purpose.
That's right.
And, and we're also replacing the woven wire fence, which goes from Gate 1 all the way to the east end of the property with chain link fence, which, that's during the day, that's what we could afford, and it served its purpose for 35 years as well. The high voltage program on the electric out there, that's in serious need of some updates. We, we've accepted a bid, and they're collecting materials to start that process as soon as we can get going. And also on the generator for the Expo Center, that's on the, the horizon here, and we hope to get that done within the next year. In addition to that, we plan on improving the campground. The sewer system out there is a little troubled with the electric, and we're, we're going to totally revamp that and improve the sewer line and, and add electric to it. The wash racks at the swine barn, I don't want to bore you with all these things. We're just going to hit some of the headlights, headlines. We're going to improve the hard line to Gate 5 for internet. We're going to, planning on putting some new LED parking lot lights. We, we have a several year plan to do that, and to, at one point in time, have all of them replaced. Waterline valves during the winter, the winter's hard on them sometimes, and they're, we're going to improve and, and replace several waterline valves. And we're going to paint the inside of the 4H building. And the swine barn has a little foundation problem that we're going to have some experts look at. The building is, is cracking the concrete, and, and we're not really comfortable with that. So I, I did print off a list of capital projects that we've done since 1985. And since 1985, we've, after this year, we've spent about $4 million to, to improve and keep the grounds running. So in addition to that, I just wanted to touch base on something that's very dear to my heart, and that's the fair. And this year, we just, we just announced a new fellow that's really hitting, really, really doing well. His name's Jelly Roll. And I just want to share, it might not meet a lot to a lot of people.
Who was his name?
Jelly Roll.
Jelly Roll?
Yeah. And he, and he's, it, he, he's had, he had a troubled past. His youth, he spent a lot of time in prison. And he just recently played the Bridgestone Arena in Nashville. And he just recently played the Bridgestone Arena in Nashville and he donated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that show to the prison where he was an inmate for the troubled youth to put in counsel and things like that so they can learn recording. He says that, that during his time there, he did have some ability to learn some things, but he's really reaching out to the troubled youth and helping to make a difference. And he is a phenomenal guy. And, and I think that, I don't think, I know that our, our reach for him has been phenomenal. Yesterday, we announced it and the reach for him on the social media was over a half a million people with eighty-five thousand post engagement. And on our post, our loan on Porter County, on our website, we, we had seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred comments and fifty-seven hundred shares, which is larger than any show we've done. So, and we've had fourteen sellouts in my tenure there, which is amazing. And we're getting, you know, the impact on our community, we're getting people, I manage the ticketing side of it as well, and we get, we get people coming from far, far away. And we sell tickets in Arizona and California and Texas and, and everywhere in between. And so I'm happy to say that the hundred and fifty thousand people that we draw to Porter County Fair, we have a large impact on the community and, and with the, the financial impact and, you know, with hotels, food, gas, all those things. So we're proud to be part of that community and we're excited about doing this, this thing in the community that is one of the larger draws that, that the community has. And I, you know, in one of my jobs, I get to book acts across this side of the Mississippi. And it's amazing how many people have heard of the Porter County Fair. It's just we're, we're really proud to be part of it and proud to be, you know, represent them here at the meeting. So, one person I forgot to mention is Mike Kerlis is our vice president. He's in the room today. He came along to make sure I do my job. And Lori has been a great ambassador with us at the fair. And if there's anything that you see that you need, please, you know, pass it on to Lori and she, she has a, you know, great communication with us and we work well together.
Yeah, I, you know, and Laura played a key role in, you know, the fair receiving some of the ARPA funds and, and, you know, and then, I mean, I've known before today, of course, you know, how the money was going to be spent. And I just want to say that I think that the way that you're spending it is extremely responsible. And, and it's, and you're spending it in a way where our residents are going to see, see the impact of that. So thank you for that.
One of the things that we looked at when we were talking, first talking about it is safety of the grounds. So when we talk about electric, that's a big part of the safety issue.
Dave?
And the fence.
Proud of our fair, part of the Expo, or proud of the Expo Center and the way it's ran as well, so.
Well, and we want to do our part to make it look as best as we can, so.
It's working. Well, any questions?
No, we do need to approve the fee waiver schedule that Lori mentioned.
Yeah, we have a, we have been asked by some of the nonprofits, you know...
No, this is, no, this is internal. This is internal.
Oh, this is our department.
This is our department.
Okay.
Specifically Sheriff, Highway Elections, Stormwater Judges, MS4, Soil and Water, and the Health Department. And I believe the final request is that if the expo has expenditures for one of these departments, then the direct cost of that expenditure would be reimbursed by the department, but the rent would be waived.
Correct. Any equipment that the county owns as well, but any, any money that the expo puts out of their budget would be reimbursed at normal rates by that department.
And you're the sheriff?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
For the public, this is, these are our departments that need to hold events at the Expo Center. And so it does cost, you know, there's a usual cost, but we'd like to waive that for our own departments, especially when they are reaching out into the community and holding events that benefit everyone. It doesn't make sense for Porter County Government to be paying Porter County Government.
Yes, yes.
And the other thing is, they don't just have carte blanche where they can come in and have anything. We have a very specific list of events that we are pre-approving so that Lori doesn't have to keep coming to us. But should they come, should, like the sheriff, come up with a completely different request, that would still have to come before us for approval.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve those fees.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day.
I'll be right back.
Just a list of capital projects.
Thanks. I'll be right back.
I'm going to take a two-minute.
Okay.
We're going to take a two-minute recess. And if you go outside, just be quiet, come back in.
Let me see.
We're back in session. Was that five minutes? Is that two minutes?
I suppose it's two minutes.
IT Department, Lee Childers, Director, what do you have for us later?
Go ahead, Tom. Tom's here to present on telephones.
Good morning, everyone. Tom Carroll from NITCO. Just here to walk you through your new phone system, which will be, it's already being installed. As a matter of fact, we, we've installed the phones into the IT department. NITCO's been in the phone business since nineteen thirty-nine, so it's been a long time. NITCO actually stands for Northwestern Indiana Telephone Company. So our legacy telephone service is very well-known and around Porter County, we've been installing a significant number of new phone systems. Legacy phone systems, the onsite, on-premise PBXs are wearing out very, very quickly. Most of them are operated through Centrex lines or POTS lines, POTS lines standing for plain old telephone service. Pretty much those systems are starting to go away. They're all based now on networking and internet or voice-over-IP services. The new phone system that we're installing for all of the county departments is a HPBX or hosted phone system. NITCO has a meta-switch, which is a state-of-the-air telephone switch, which is located in our corporate headquarters in Hebron. So all of the phone systems all travel through and are hosted there. So you have no onsite, on-premise phone system. All you have onsite are the desktop phones themselves, or the cordless phones, or the conference phones. But everything is operated, maintained by NITCO at our corporate headquarters. The contract that the county signed, which was signed, I believe, two months ago, allows for NITCO to install all of the phones. They are leased to the county on a monthly cost. And NITCO maintains those phones. The amount of maintenance that the IT department would have to do going forward is very limited. We do give the individual departments access through a web portal to be able to go in and take a look at the phones and see if there are any changes they want to make. If they want to do some call forwarding, if they want to make changes to features, they can do that. And so that's available to all the department heads through Lee and his team at the IT department to make those adjustments as needed. We're the backup. If they need us to make any major changes, if for some reason a phone fails, we just come up and replace it at no additional charge. So the system works very, very well. NITCO's had this specific system, a Polycom phone system, in our own corporate headquarters for the last eleven years. And we love it. The amount of features that are available, including call forwarding, do not disturb, voicemail, are all involved and are all part of that. As a matter of fact, I was talking with Barb earlier today about how she wants her phone set up at her office and Jim could have his separately. But each department can set their phone systems up a little bit differently. Have their own auto attendants, have their own speed dialing systems and setup. So it's, it's a pretty nice system and it's very affordable. This also means that the county has no upfront costs. NITCO will be spending somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase all the phones and then get them installed. And that cost is not an upfront cost that the county has to, has to spend. So we're looking forward to it. I think your departments are looking forward to it because your current phone system, as you know, has failed on a number of occasions. And so we don't ever want to see that happen again.
Right. I mean, as Lee, as Lee will know, before bringing you on with the, with the contract a couple of months ago, that was all, all that was done in-house. And for those of you that may be wondering, we have nearly eight hundred phones in county government that have to be maintained. Which, as, you know, with the department that he has, that size, with everything else that they have to do, that's just a huge undertaking. Because you can imagine how many calls that you would receive on a daily basis, my phone's not working, from guys like me.
Yeah, and it's not only calls, it's the equipment's expensive to replace and you need to do it on a, like a five-year plan, which we haven't done for a while, which got us into this problem in the first place. And we're not trained telephony people. And this is definitely, the commissioner's made a good choice, I believe.
And the other thing that's, that's, I think, a real, a positive with all this, this, this program or project is that NITCO is local. They employ our local residents and that's always a plus. So what do you need from us? You need a...
This was merely a presentation.
A presentation.
We approved it.
Well, thank you.
And thank you very much. And we look, we look forward to do more business with you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
You have a request for an additional appropriation for Fund 1,000 account, thirty-one-two-zero-zero, consultants in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars?
That's correct. I started out this budget with zero this year and I already have invoices coming in.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome. Utilities, Daniel Sullivan. You, where are you going? Gentlemen, you can come up here as well, if you'd like. We've asked Daniel to ask ABM Building Solutions to come up and do a presentation for consideration of a memorandum of understanding for preliminary assessment of our utilities in here, I guess.
Essentially, yes. To, to, the, ABM has approached us about, the county about, is to do a free-of-charge preliminary assessment to see where there are opportunities for energy savings that could actually fund projects down the road that would not only upgrade those energies using systems, but other systems as well. Eric, I've asked Eric Dustin to give a quick presentation on what they do.
Laura, yours.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everybody, for this time and opportunity. So generally, what we do in this memorandum of understanding with ABM is we come in and we bring actually certified engineers to a, a number of buildings and we're going to explore really the entire infrastructure. So it could be energy, operations, and maintenance are kind of the three buckets that we're looking at for these potential savings. Energy could be, it could be light, if there are old CFLs versus LED lighting. Even some of the LED that was, could have been potentially replaced fifteen years ago, there's some pretty significant efficiency opportunities for newer technologies with LED lighting as well. Even water conservation, turning lights on and off, the control system, there's some significant, potentially significant savings there as well. Maintenance and operations, we look at, you know, those schedules too and try and identify the hours, the time spent into that, or if there's equipment. So we actually go through and do a full assessment of all the equipment, fundamental to the building's operation, HVAC included in that as well. And then we grade that. And so we give an idea of what is the life expectancy on that and what is also what's really important, the capital volatility. So we'll provide the county with that as we move forward through this process. Has it passed its expected life already and it's limping along, or does it have another five years or ten years? And then what is the projected cost of that equipment in today's dollars versus what it will be in five and, and ten years potentially? So with all of that, we are able to oftentimes pay for all of that project through savings or oftentimes based off of the, the county's objectives and needs and desires, we can use those savings to fund other critical infrastructure needs. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, what we do. And this memorandum of understanding really identifies those buildings that we come in and look at first pass, maybe identify four or five critical or aging ones. I've heard you mention a few already, like the prison, for example. Maybe we go after those rather than, I believe, the approximately twenty buildings throughout the, the county. A few unique things about what we do is, well, first, that there is no upfront cost for this memorandum, this preliminary assessment. Also, when we do, we are farther along in the process and we propose a potential project, our work is guaranteed. So we use the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Legislation for the State of Indiana. So ultimately, if we don't deliver the savings that we guarantee, we're writing a check for it. So it is truly guaranteed and we also guarantee the price so with that, there's no change orders. So oftentimes, there's that bid and spec or the scope seems to, to change throughout the process. We guarantee that there are no change orders throughout this as well.
Now, now, how are, how are, how are you exact, how are, how do you get compensated?
Yeah, great question. So I'd say a lot of the ways we act as a general contractor, and we are a publicly traded company, so we do have a markup. When we go through this, if we were to move forward with a project, we are really single source accountability. So we manage everything like a general contractor. We can use local labor from the, to do the actual work. We have a branch office in Indianapolis as well. But so there is a markup, I think, generally, it's seven to nine percent is what we're making.
And how does that compare to, if we just do it in-house, a traditional approach?
Traditional approach, I think oftentimes when you go bid and spec and it's low bid, and actually, I came from that world before I joined ABM, you'll try and, a lot of people will come in very low upfront and then they make their money on change orders. So it's very, very, it's, it's really variable throughout the process. Margins upfront might be, say, ten percent. And then when there's change orders, you know, I've seen many companies easily at twenty-five percent, for example.
And you have, you said you have, you have several different, you can come in here and look at the lighting, or you could come in here and look at things such as a boiler or air conditioning HVAC systems?
Absolutely. We've roofs, another one, we have, we've done a lot of roofs. Actually, I've heard solar mentioned. I'm not familiar with that project, but we've done multiple solar projects as well. We have a specific solar division, EV charging stations. I think ABM is actually the largest provider of EV charging in, in the United States.
The commissioners have any questions?
Did you want to talk about how you're under, that you don't have to do bidding or anything like that?
Yeah, no, great question. Thank you, Barb. So another thing that is unique to ABM is that we are GSA, we can leverage GSA procurement. So GSA is the, is a federal program. It's ultimately a buying co-op. So what that is, we've been pre-approved, it's almost a two-year vetting process with the federal government where we've been pre-approved and identified. So ultimately, it qualifies where you don't have to go out, again, to that traditional bid spec where you're comparing three people, trying to get into the lowest bid, and then they come in with the change orders. So that's one of the ways, again, we're able to, to guarantee what we do. And it streamlines the process as well. So we can move it a lot quicker.
Laura, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Here's where I'm at on it. You know, and I, I don't mind, I'm not shy about, I work for an architectural engineering firm, that's my full-time job.
Yep.
And, and as a commissioner, I, you know, so I know a little bit about what you're doing. But as a commissioner, you know, I, I would, I'd like to do a taste test first instead of opening up our, every building to you and, and every aspect of, of, you know, of, of our properties to you is, if the other two commissioners would be willing to do it as well, is to take a look at all of our lighting in all of our buildings. Let us know what we have there and how we can save some money there. You just, you said through the entire meeting, you know, that we were talking to NIPSco about our electric bills. So if you're willing to, you're wanting to do that at no cost and come back with a report as to how we can save some money, I'd be willing to take a look at that.
Excellent. And I would ask, well, would you consider the HVAC equipment too? Because that's one of the largest energy consumptions.
Energy, yeah.
Yeah, there's the HVAC.
Sure, we can look at that.
Okay.
Is that okay with the other two commissioners, though?
The only thing I would like to add, and this is no reflection on your organization, but I would prefer to do the kind of contracts where we pay someone to be our agent. And that's all, they're not going to make money down the line on their recommendations to us. That just doesn't sit well with me. And as far as the change orders rolling in, and we just did $30 million of capital renovations and we did not have that problem. I mean, you've sat here through it too. We had a few change orders.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a problem. You know, it's.
Not at all. Some of them were the opposite.
Projects are, are watched or managed closely, it, it doesn't get away from you.
So those are my thoughts.
But I, I'm, I'm curious if nothing else. So I, I totally get where, where Commissioner Blaney's coming from. You know, she's a tough nut to sell. She should be, right? And I understand, and I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with what she's saying. But you seem like a nice young guy and I met, I think I even met you down at the Commissioners' Conference.
We did, yep.
And, you know, Daniel had, you know, Dan, I think Daniel's also interesting seeing what you come up with. And it's not going to cost us anything. So I guess, you know, if it's, if it's okay with the other two, we'll give you a, a, a crack at her, her lighting and her, and her cooling and heating and see what you come up with.
Excellent. Appreciate it.
Do you need a motion, Scott? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we have to approve the MOU.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Is the MOU, I mean, we just kind of changed things up?
Yeah.
Well, the MOU was brought to begin with, so I think the MOU is calling out for the, for the county to choose which.
Yeah.
Which project or buildings to be working on.
Why don't we do this, guys? Give our attorney some time to look at this and we have to mend it a little bit because we're not, we're not doing the whole spectrum of your services. And come back at our next meeting, I'll have you on the agenda and we'll take care of it then, okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Daniel.
Do we have something else for Daniel?
You got something else for Daniel? Yes, I do. Three quotes for 157 Franklin AC unit replacement for the 911 service room. Daniel?
Yes, so we're proposing to procure the low bid from Gatlin Plumbing and Heating for 121.5 to replace the existing air conditioning system serving the, the 911 center's data server room. This will give us a better design system, a system designed for the server room that will last us a good long time. It will be fully monitored, it will be fully backed up and redundant and so forth. It will also be appropriate for providing the kind of heat, temperature and humidity concerns at both summer and winter and a whole lot less hands-on work for my team to be able to constantly nervously check on that for such a critical piece of.
Yeah, you're right. There, there are some problems with, as you know, the developing condensation in those rooms that wreak havoc on the equipment that's in there.
Exactly.
So you're recommending Gatlin Plumbing and Heating at the low bid of $121,500?
Yes.
Do we have a?
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Jim Polyrk. God, this meeting's long. It is. It is. I didn't eat breakfast. So as this thing, as this thing plays out, if I seem a little grouchy as we get closer to the end? We have the award bids for 223 supplies, our 2023 supplies.
Correct. We opened these up at the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
We went back and reviewed them and I, I sent it to your office a week or so ago. What we recommend is for limestone, Whitcomb Trucking and Harry Brown. For liquid bituminous, accept all bids. Bituminous plant mix, accept all bids. Slag would be Beamster Bore. Calcium chloride would be Great Lakes Chloride. Culvert pipes would accept all bids. Diesel fuel would be Coalliance and Triple J Mar. Pavement striping would be Airmarking. Signs and posts, all bids. Equipment rental, all bids. And then bridge slabs and beams, all bids. Is what our recommendation is.
Okay. And you, we, you need a motion to accept it, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Ladies?
I move that we accept the award bids for the 2023 supplies.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And we got a request for a $2,000 stipend for the CDL trainers.
Right, what we want to do is through working with Purdue LTAP is do our own CDL training in-house. If we were to send out to a driving school, you're looking about $4,500 to get somebody a CDL license. And we've all seen and heard about how hard it is and experienced how hard it is to get CDL drivers. So this would allow us to train in-house. There's two parts to the training. Purdue would handle the book learning part. It could be done online or in person through Purdue at no charge to government agencies. And then they would also train our CDL instructor who would then be certified through the federal motor carriers to be the actual behind-the-wheel instructor. So they would be obviously taking on the responsibility of doing that and having to get certified through the federal motor carriers. So we'd like to get an annual stipend of $2,000 so they could do that training.
So just, so the, the, the public understands is currently the traditional way to, to approach this is we, we want you to have the CDL when you apply.
Correct.
If you don't have it, you can't be hired.
Right.
What we're doing is taking it in-house and I, I believe this is your idea, isn't it? This is your idea to, to bring it in-house?
That's what, yeah, kind of a community idea.
Yeah.
But yes, that would give us the ability to, like, for this next request, we could hire a high school right out of trade school here at Vocational and then we could train them to be a mechanic and work on getting them their CDL and so on.
I actually talked to a couple of other counties about this. They thought it was a fantastic idea and they're going to start looking into it themselves to do it.
Yeah, obviously, we can work with Scott to have some type of agreement signed where, you know, we pay, we train them and then they agree to work, you know, for so many years with us.
And you have mentioned that to Mr. McClure?
Yeah, I will be.
Okay. That's important.
Well, Purdue won't have this set until April is when Purdue will have all this up and going there is their estimated time. So I will begin with Mr. McClure and see what we can.
So this is all due to you approaching LTAP and?
No, this whole conversation started, I think, last year, Road School is about the first time it came up is when federal regulations on how you get a CDL all changed. It used to be you could go train yourself, go take a test for 150 bucks and have your CDL. Well, now you have to go to actual certified driving school. You can't train yourself anymore. So we're taking.
And what's the price of that certified driving school? What's the price?
About $4,500.
Jeez.
So.
So you can understand, folks, you can understand why we're not getting the applications in of, of, of drivers who are holding a CDL currently. They're, they're becoming a rare commodity. And the only way you get their attention or drawing, drawing them to you is you keep raising your hourly rate. But if we, we can make ourselves attractive by offering the training without out-of-pocket expense to the applicant, I mean, I, I really think that we're going to get a lot of attention for that.
Well, yeah, hopefully they, you know, we can bring them in and train them and they stay with us for the specified amount of time and they realize it's a, a good place to work and they, and they hang on for.
Well, I hope they stay longer than just this.
Well, exactly. That's, that's, that's the hope is that it stays till retirement.
I think it's a fantastic program that we're going to try here. Entertain a motion to, to approve the $2,000 stipend.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Request for a new full-time mechanics assistant at the rate of 41,000, at the salary of $41,600?
Right, that would be an hourly, that's what $20 an hour comes out to. And this would go to, let me back up a little bit. When we, we've been understaffed mechanic-wise for close to two years. We're just not getting anybody to apply. So this would give us the option to go to the vocational school and interview prospective employees. And I've already touched base with one of the instructors at Vocational and when it gets down towards graduation time, hopefully this gets approved by the council and we can interview some students out of their diesel program. When we were fully staffed with mechanics, we still had too much work to where, the point where drivers right now have to do their own services on their vehicles and on their heavy equipment. So instead of being out working on roads, they're in the shop doing oil changes and grease jobs on vehicles. So this would allow this position, even if we did end up getting our, a mechanic in the future, somebody that could do those services and that we can get our other employees back out on the road where they need to be.
Is that hourly rate competitive?
I guess we're going to find out. Hopefully with a, you know, so obviously we'd bring them in without a CDL, so.
Okay.
And we would hope that we could train them and then maybe if they get their CDL, then we can come back and make them a mechanic or we do have mechanics that are getting close to retirement, so.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
And the only thing I would say is obviously the commissioner's approved, so now you've got to get it through the council.
Correct.
Both the $2,000 stipend and the, be full-time.
Right. It will be on its way to joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Stormwater development, Director Bob Thompson. Chelsea? Roma's at, at the end, folks, hang in there. We're getting close. Make this short. Nice that the guys had you carry the heaviest.
Isn't that nice?
Keep this short.
Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm John San Giorgio with United Consulting. Our firm is under contract to provide bridge inspection services for your county bridge inventory. The contract covers a two-year period which began in May of 2022. Slide please. The bridge inspections are required by the Federal Highway Administration every two years for any county bridge not owned by NDOT with a span length greater than 20 feet. These inspections keep the county in compliance with the federal standards and the county is reimbursed for 80% of the contract cost as long as you're staying in compliance, which Porter County is. Slide please. This morning, I'm presenting the Bridge Inventory Report based on our findings from the first phase of the inventory which was completed in May 2022. This report contains several summary reports that are useful to the county in understanding the condition of the bridges in your inventory. In addition to the summary reports, each of the 132 bridges in your inventory has its own inspection report and these reports contain detailed information regarding our inspection findings. Next slide. The flash drive in front of you contains a digital copy of the report in case you don't want to thumb through that large book, as well as an interactive map that allows you to click on any bridge and bring up the inspection report and photos. To help you navigate this report, I've prepared a summary sheet that Jen's handed out that identifies the location of the key summary reports you may be interested in. This includes, you can find a list of maintenance needs for your bridges, a summary of bridges posted with a load limit, as well as the recommendations we've made for structures that should be planned for replacement or rehabilitation in the near future. Next slide please. On the back sheet of the summary report, you'll find statistics on how Porter County compares to statewide averages. The average age in the bridges in Porter County is approximately 54 years old compared to a statewide average of 45 years old. Porter County currently has 70 bridges that are older than 50 years. Depending on structure type and traffic, the anticipated service life of a bridge is typically in the range of 50 to 100 years. Many of the county's older bridges were built around the same time and are all approaching their anticipated end of life in the next 20 years or so. Next slide please. The priority schedules in the report shows our estimate of bridges that we recommend replacing or rehabilitating in the near future, along with an estimate of costs. We work with Bob Thompson to prioritize the bridges based on structural condition, load rating, traffic and other geometrics. Out of the 19 bridges currently recommended for replacement or rehabilitation, 14 of the bridges are currently already under design or construction. Many of these bridges have federal funding also secured to aid in the construction cost. Due to Bob and Porter County's aggressiveness in submitting federal funding applications, Porter County has consistently been one of the top counties in Indiana in securing federal aid for their bridge projects. Next slide please. We recommend that the county continue to prioritize funding of additional maintenance and repairs in the coming years in order to get the most out of your existing bridges. Porter County does have a higher number of older bridges compared to most states, but has done a good job of keeping their bridges in solid condition considering their age. Also, Porter County has nine bridges that are currently posted for load. This is 6.5% of their inventory compared to 14% of a typical Indiana county. This is a testament to ongoing timely bridge maintenance from your bridge team. Next slide please. It's been a pleasure working with Porter County this past few years. Our goal is to be an extension of your development and stormwater department and keep your bridges in good shape for the traveling public. We truly appreciate the opportunity to work on the contract and look forward to working with you over the next year.
You do, you guys do a great job, by the way. Very good job.
And at this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any.
Thanks also to your staff for keeping things up.
So you need a, you need a, a motion for us to, to approve the agreement?
That's for the annual agreement. That's the next step.
Okay, go ahead.
We do have the annual agreement. This is a supplement number four. Just essentially updates the hourly rates for United's staff. On this, we do use United on a, during this annual agreement with tasks, could be coming up to inspect a particular bridge. We've had that past couple of years where we had, have them come up and look at a particular bridge. So that's.
It's like an on-call.
It is, it is an on-call.
You need a, you need a, okay, we need that approved, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the annual agreement supplement number four for United Consulting.
There was second? Laura?
I said second. I was whispering.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. I think that's good for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
DLZ Small Structure Agreement. Is anybody from DLZ here? You see that consultant, you show up, but your competitor don't, say?
This agreement is really for two small structures. It's 150 South over Cobb Ditch and also 750 West over Duck Creek. This is based from the Small Structure Report that we had recently done of 32 some small structures. United did the report for us on that. DLZ in this case, we're asking for the approval of this agreement for these two small structures. We, this will be the four that we have out now. Out of these four small structures, we're expecting three of them to be up on your next update that you have with the bridges. They're going to increase in size. We're pretty confident that they're going to reach over 20-foot span. So Cobb, Ditch, yeah, we're really confident that's going to be a bridge.
How, any idea how big of a bridge?
Currently.
When you say bridge, is that a?
20-foot span. At least a 20-foot span. The three culverts there now, if you go on one side of the road, it meets the 20-foot span to be a bridge. If you go on the other side of the road, it's a little less than 20 feet. So they asked me, how do you want to classify it? And I said, small structure because it's going to become a bridge.
So we need a, we need a motion to approve the DLZ agreement?
I move that we approve the DLZ Small Structure Agreement for Structure Pier Dash 002 and Structure UN 003.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. All fairies, DLZ. Tony Kenny was here earlier. I think we just bored him to death and so he had to leave.
Okay.
You have any, I've got a request to extend employment due to FMLA runout.
Yes, this is for Mike Novatny, our county engineer. He did take a leave. He was on FMLA. It has run out. We're requesting that we continue Mike's employment as the county engineer. He has already told staff that he will be returning on February 13th.
So are you asking for an extension for those few days between now and the 13th?
We were told by HR that since FMLA ran out that we have to approach you to have the approval of being able to keep him as an employee of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Honeycutt, Family, Youth, and Service Bureau. Carrie, you have a request to use the sidewalks surrounding the courthouse grounds for the annual chalk, the walk on Saturday. I love this time of year. It's great. The artwork is really great. On Saturday, June 10th, 2023, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the event will include live music and free creative children's activities. There will be a tent, table, and chairs. Would also like access to an outlet, to electrical outlet. I have no idea what that outlet would be. I'm sure we have one.
There is one for a speaker for the music.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck with the weather.
It was perfect last year, so.
Valpo Events, Katie Abel. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We have a request to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, May 6th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. for the 2023 Chocolate Walk, another favorite of Scott and I's. And mine? He's laughing. Yeah, I see him laughing. There will be tables, chairs, signs, and tents with no more than 20 stations for distributing chocolate.
And actually, only check-in will be on the courthouse line. Retailers are using their own establishments now, post-COVID. I can reiterate that.
Can I read all these and we do them all at the same time?
You sure can.
Okay. A request to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, for popcorn festival. On-site will be a tent, popcorn tent, with industrial popping machines, medic tents, and water station. Northwest Indiana tents will begin tent setup on Wednesday, September 7th, and will remove all items by Sunday, September 10th. We also request the use of the judge's parking lot after close of business on Friday, September 8th, for EMS medic setup needs, along with access to the roof at 157 Franklin to use the antenna. Question last year, did you have access to, I can't remember, did you have access to the judge's parking area?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't a problem. You have a request to use the courthouse grounds on Friday, October 13th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. The actual event will take place between 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to host downtown trick-or-treat. They will be displaying signs and banners as well. And your final request is a request to use the courthouse grounds on Friday, December 1st, from 2:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. On Saturday, December 2nd, from 3:00 p.m. to, I'm assuming it's 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay.
p.m.
If not, that's going to be a long day. For holiday, holidays, there will be food vendors, carolers, the holiday craft station for kids. Majority of the activities will take place on the northwest corner, northeast corner, and west triangle. They are also requesting the use of electrical outlet for holiday music. Entertain a motion to?
I move to approve the Valpo Events as described.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Approved. Operators of Community Schools, Jessica Corral, or Carol?
She's not available.
Okay. Flint Lake Art Teacher, a request to display artwork for spring into the arts in the admin center. The set, setup date will be Friday, April 21st, and the art will be on display from Saturday, April 22nd through Saturday, May 20th. Takedown will be on Monday, May 22nd. We do this, we do this every year.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Any other matter which may properly come before the commissioners? Comment by the public? Come up, please state your name.
My name is Mary Abreza. And I'm here about no stove, and I'm here about for you. Quickly tell us a story in few words. I have, the situation is that the administrative, civil, and criminal violations. The conflict is Valparaiso municipality has caused an adverse development by their economic development or capital improvement that's devoid any mitigation. It occurred without public hearing input, without measures, standards, proper laws followed, even so much as a cost-benefit review without any traffic analysis. A municipal employee pulled away the signs, no through truck regula, regulations, saying we own the street. The mayor continues to ignore that he's adversely affected a particular segment of the population not consistent, not compatible with their social and economic values. The negatively affected public challenged with a 99% petition twice in a resounding no. The public has given solid information to warranted, restored, restriction-type location, maintenance condition, and explanation of the impacts. So I understand your wheel and spoke theory, but Porter County to be in compliant with federal state regulations and in order to receive federal assistance and maintain eligibility, there has to be a mitigation strategy. And that's what I'm saying they didn't do. They just said, we're doing this and whatever. So the goal of mitigation is to reduce future impacts. And utmost is loss of life, and I've gone there about safety, property damage, disruption to local and regional economies, expenditure of public and private funds, and it's just without sound risk management. So we're up against this toxic situation where the mayor is negligent in the required fidelity and fiduciary bonds, leaving the city unable to absorb the liability. And I'm saying this corruption is leading to more corruption. So there was a report given to you from a right-hand man that totally disregarded our injury, our safety, our health. It was blazing. The mayor gave approval to keep doing what he, what the abuse is doing. Environmental hazards clearly states, avoid routing traffic through residential areas and have trucks to direct access to the waste site. What they're doing is cutting through Yellowstone Road to Howe Street, I told you this before, to get to the waste site. This is unacceptable. And so now I just want to say that last January 23rd, now January 27th, they applied for state monies to the taxpayers to pay for damages that the city caused, because he doesn't have the insurance and to absorb the cost. And in addition, on that January 27th meeting, in the other section of the agenda, he vaguely stated that he wanted to appropriate monies to pay for a bond. If that's his personal bond, that's unacceptable, too. Taxpayers don't pay for damages that you cause, well, he, you know, in the city. And I, and if this is going on, it's just more corruption after corruption. So I just wanted to tell you that it's, it's not just some simple little thing.
Well, Mary, we appreciate that. And I think this is like maybe the third time that you.
It's at least the fifth time.
Fifth time?
And I understand what you're saying. He's in the wheel, he's in the center of the wheel, and you're just a spoke.
No, I'm not, I'm not a spoke to the city of Valparaiso. Let's be clear on that. No, we're not a spoke to the city of Valparaiso. That is a separate unit of government, governed by different laws. We do not have any, any authority, you know, within our, our means to enforce any, anything on their right of ways, any, any one of our ordinances on their right of ways. I have reached out personally to Mayor Murphy. He was very kind to turn the question over to, I believe it was Mike Jabo, head of their engineering department. Mike was, sent back to me a two-page explanation as to what was going on. It is complex, but from what I read out of it, it, you know, it made sense. Now, I grant you, I don't live there. You do. And you don't, you, you have to tolerate those trucks. I don't. I get that. And if there was something that we could do on our end, it would have been done by now. And I wish, I wish you luck, you know, in your effort to try to get their attention to see your side of it, so.
So in the mitigation strategies that I'm talking about today, it's signed by Porter County, which includes Beverly Shores, and includes Chesterton, and includes that you're over all of this. And I know you just want to be the infrastructure of the bridges and the roads and all that. But the very first thing is life, safety, people. So that's why I'm saying, I'm bringing this back to you, because if you want to sustain your, or maintain your eligibility for FEMA assistance or any of that, you can't allow this government, this local government of Valparaiso, to continue in administrative negligence, civil complaints, and even criminal complaints, so.
Well, you.
That's what I'm proposing to you.
Well, I appreciate that. Again, we, we have no authority. I just don't. I almost wish that we did, so we could, we could bring this, you know, this issue to a close, but we don't. So, thank you, though. Dawn?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Dawn Miller. Okay, the only reason I really kind of wanted to come up was when NIPSCO came up. I have some questions. I don't know if any of you guys were able to get a copy of this. I'll give you a copy. It was from January 4th. There's a NIPSCO rate case, and it, they kind of went into detail of the things that they are planning on doing. Give you just a brief little overview. NIPSCO's request would raise an average monthly residential electric bill from 107 to, wait, 10778 to 12721 under a two-phase increase in September 2023 and March 2024. The bill then would rise to 13343 under a new tracker, and they have that, on, I'm sorry, tracker or rate adjustment mechanism that will gradually raise rates starting July 24, 2024. So what's to stop the gradual increases? How are we going to know? They were also talking about these solar farms. A friend of mine, she lives in Couch, and she took me on a little tour down there. I was amazed by how many of these farms that are out there. Go down Route 10 and 300. I believe, she says, the city was terved, not quite sure, but they're everywhere. And she was informing me that wildlife does not even want to go close to these. Kind of something that I found interesting. Do we know how much these solar, the solar panels cost? Do we have any idea?
I don't, I don't know. You do know we're having a presentation, a public presentation at the Expo Center this month.
I'm sorry, what?
We're having a public presentation later this month inviting NextEra Solar to come in and so the public can hear their, you know, their plan on what they would like to do and they, and also the opportunity for the commissioners. Now, the commissioners really haven't heard it face-to-face, and we, but primarily, more than anything, we want to hear from the public, what do they think?
Right. Okay, I like that. Thank you. Do you know how many solar panels that we have here in Valparaiso?
I would, I would think that we have, we probably have a few thousand, with that, if you count public and private.
No, I'm, I guess I would be speaking more private, like, I guess.
Well, you heard NIPSCO. NIPSCO said that they had some solar panels themselves that they have, that they have built.
That they had built, built here in Valpo.
Well, I can't say that. But I did hear.
I've just seen some, so I'm just curious.
I don't know if they're here in Porter County or if they're in, you know.
I know for, honestly, I know for a fact that there are a bunch in Valparaiso. So I was just curious. And they left, NIPSCO did. So in Porter County, do we even have an option to go to another company for electric or gas? Because I mean, in my opinion, that's kind of like monopolizing if we don't have that option. I guess there's other towns that can choose, what is it, like Michigan City, you know, they have NIPSCO for one, and then they have gas or whatever for, with another company. So I was just curious. Do we really feel that solar is important in northwest Indiana? We don't have a lot of sunlight. I mean, I, I would say probably within the last month, we really haven't had a lot of sun. So I'm just, those are just some things I was curious about. I was surprised that NIPSCO didn't.
I, I would think that thousands, if not tens of thousands of our residents had the same concerns and they, they have questions. And that's what we're going to try to give to them later this month.
Okay.
Some answers to those questions.
I just want to say thank you for, you know, the Expo Center, all the things that they're doing there. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea to upgrade that place, and, you know, they see so many more people than some of the buildings around here that were proposed to get $5 million. So I think that's a very good investment, since I would say probably five, 10 times more people go to the Expo Center than, say, the Memorial Opera House. So I'm glad to see that that money is getting put towards something that more than just Valparaiso would be benefiting from. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Our next meeting is February 27th at the Expo Center. Entire meeting will be dedicated to the proposal from NextEra Solar to put, huh? At 5:30 p.m. So hope to see some of you there. Scott, you got anything more? Nothing? Good?